One. It's, I apologize for the few minutes that we were late. We were raising the Progress Pride flag in front of City Hall, and I was doing a few proclamations, but now we're ready to kick off our City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. It is June 13th. I will call this meeting to order, and we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
No changes this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. Item 4A, present a proclamation recognizing June 2022 as Pride Month. Yes. Okay, so tonight we have joining us Tanya Beat, Director of the San Mateo County Commission on the Status of Women and the County's LGBTQ Commission. And I'm going to read the proclamation. We are declaring June 2022 as Pride Month, whereas the City Council of San Carlos recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the city of San Carlos. And whereas the city of San Carlos joins the County of San Mateo to observe Pride Month to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the Progress Pride flag, a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in society, will be proudly flown at City Hall throughout the month of June to further symbolize the city's celebration of diversity and support for the LGBTQ community. And additionally, to celebrate unity within our community, the city of San Carlos will host various festivities such as Pride in the Park and Pride Rocks, and will be illuminating City Hall all month long in multicolor lights. And whereas one of the city of San Carlos's core values is to be a safe, diverse, welcoming, and engaged community, and thereby, the city wholeheartedly supports visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Pride Month throughout the city of San Carlos and urge our community to stand together and actively promote the principles of equality and liberty, presented this 13th day of June. Thank you, Tanya. Would you like to stand here and say a few words?
I would love to be able to share a few words. Thank you, Mayor McDowell. Is this on? Do you think? Oh, I hear it now. Good evening, Mayor McDowell, City Council members, city staff. Thank you for inviting me to accept the San Carlos Pride Month proclamation. My name is Tanya Beat, my pronouns are she, her, and hers, and I'm the Director of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. On behalf of the Commission, I want to thank San Carlos for this proclamation declaring June as Pride Month. You join a movement of inclusion and visibility that impacts LGBTQ+ residents here and throughout the county. And since late March, the Commission has invited all cities to recognize Pride Month in a variety of ways that best fits their communities. I just want to let you know, all cities have now issued a Pride Month proclamation and have raised a version of the Pride flag. I see you have the Progress Pride flag here, and we just had the raising outside. Excellent. At this point, I mean, I usually like to share a personal moment of being part of the LGBTQ community, but I just want to share a story from a person, a San Carlos resident I met on Saturday. I was at the Pride celebration for the county in the city of San Mateo, Central Park. And that's where many families, young people, and seniors joined us to celebrate a sober pride. Let's call this resident Patricia. Patricia shared that when she retired, she didn't know quite where to spend her time. And then along came an opportunity to be a school crossing guard here in San Carlos. Last August, when she started, the job was a bit challenging. Kids did not make eye contact, they just hurried by her without saying anything. So she decided to be proactive after a few weeks and really made an effort to say hi, make eye contact, and ask them how they were doing. Then she sort of grinned to me, and she was like, you know, by the end of the year, the kids and the parents gave her thank you cards and gifts. She was totally overwhelmed with the love and gratitude. More importantly, she said she never hid who she was or that she had a wife. And when a youth asked her about it, she told her, yes, I have a wife. And that youth's reaction was one of joy and relief. Patricia felt she made a difference with one young person, and that just by being herself every day, that she could be an example for not just that youth, but for all youth about LGBTQ inclusion and belonging, especially here in San Carlos. You know, I just want to let you know, the county did a survey a few years ago of the entire community and asked youth what they thought. One of the biggest things you said is, we want to see our leaders stand up for LGBTQ visibility and talk about it. And today, you've done that. You did that out here on the flagpole with those young people and with the schools that you help support, and the teachers and administrators that you work with, just by doing your jobs. Thank you very much.
Oh, sure, sorry. One second. Would any of my fellow council members like to make a comment about the Pride proclamation? Councilmember Palmer Lohan, I'll come back over.
I just want to thank Mayor McDowell for her leadership on this, as well as city staff. We had a beautiful Pride in the Park celebration this past weekend, and it was a multicultural event, and there was just so much love and joy. And I really appreciate the remarks by Tanya Beat tonight. I think it does make a difference. And a couple of years ago, I had an opportunity to meet Kai from Safe Space in Menlo Atherton High School. And Kai shared with me that they decided to be themselves and who they were, and felt that that was a revolutionary act. So let's all engage in a revolutionary act and just be ourselves and share our gifts with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Council, Vice Mayor Brack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to also thank you for your leadership on this and for us reaffirming sort of our commitment to inclusion that we started four years ago. I want to thank Councilmember Palmer Lohan for being the first to kind of, when she got elected, to raise this. And we, you know, the five of us at the time, John would agree now, all jumped in and said yes. So I'm glad that we've continued that tradition, and I thought it was really a nice gesture to have the youth of the community raise the flag today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, I might have said this the last time we had this, I have five cousins and a brother, and two of my cousins are gay, my brother is gay, and I grew up with them. They've always been great and wonderful people. When they came out, it didn't change my feelings about them, one iota. What did change was what I knew about what they went through. And that was, that was very important for me to know that. It has been, you know, they've all had their, they've all had their struggles, but I am so happy that we are finally recognizing in this month and recognizing people who are, you know, basically the same as all of us, just, you know, they, they have, they have different orientations. And because I know them, I know my cousins and my brother, they are more special to me than ever, and that means that no one to me is any different because of who they, who they are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I too just want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and my colleagues and staff, and all the community leaders that showed up today to help us celebrate this important, you know, Pride Month here in San Carlos. And I appreciate how the youth of our schools were involved, and it was just a nice event today. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. For the viewers at home, we, before this meeting, we had a Progress Pride flag raising ceremony, and as part of that ceremony, I issued proclamations to three youth in our community who are leaders among different student groups from Carlmont High School and Sequoia High School and Central Middle School in creating clubs and, and really giving support and a sense of belonging and community to our LGBTQ youth. And these youth leaders also got to raise the flag today. So, it was really special, and I appreciated, we had a wonderful turnout of school districts and community members, so it was very special, and I want to thank them all for coming. Okay, with that, I don't see any further comments, so we will move on now to a proclamation for Healthy Cities Tutoring recognizing their 25th anniversary with Karen Molenari. Karen, thank you for being here. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. This proclamation is recognizing and commending Healthy Cities Tutoring for 25 years of service to the community. Whereas Healthy Cities Tutoring began serving the San Carlos community in 1997 with the goal of providing intergenerational, one-on-one tutoring and mentorship for children to improve their academic performance, engagement in learning, and self-esteem. And whereas for the first 13 years, Healthy Cities Tutoring was administered by the city of San Carlos before being reestablished as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in September 2011. And whereas through the dedicated efforts of its volunteers, Healthy Cities Tutoring has grown from supporting one school to providing services for all nine public schools in San Carlos, continuing its commitment to ensure every child has the support necessary to achieve their full potential. And whereas since its inception 25 years ago, Healthy Cities Tutoring has had a measurable and positive impact on our community, with over 2,500 tutors providing over 100,000 hours of free tutoring and mentoring to over 6,000 students. And whereas Healthy Cities Tutoring ensures volunteers from 14 years to 96 years of age are provided with the training and resources needed to meet the specific needs of students, accomplishing this by encouraging teachers who refer students to provide guidance and instruction on their academic needs and individualized learning plans. And whereas Healthy Cities Tutoring is supported in part due to the benevolence of local funders such as the Friends of the San Carlos Library, the San Carlos Development Corporation, the Community Foundation of San Carlos, and many local service organizations including Kiwanis, Lions, and Rotary Clubs. And whereas Healthy Cities Tutoring volunteers continue to make a difference through their generosity of spirit while providing a vital service to our schools and community, making connections to help teachers and their students have a more productive, engaged, and successful learning experience. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby commend and recognize Healthy Cities Tutoring for their 25 years of commitment and dedication to our city and encourage everyone to support this invaluable community resource presented this 13th day of June. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Do you want to stand over? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor McDowell, and council members and city staff. I just want to let you know how much I appreciate those who came before you and their foresight to see that this would be such an amazing program, and all of the work that you all continue to do to help us succeed in the community. It's really important. And as was spoken before, it's amazing to go to the parks and the stores and the baseball games and see the tutors who are asked to come and cheer on their students and the connections that are made in the community, and for those relationships that develop year over year. And I'd like to ask our board president, Michael Garb, our vice president, Jay Strauss, and my colleague, Janelle Gibson, to come up for a photo.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
I just wanted to quickly thank Healthy Cities Tutoring for what they bring to the community. I've attended some of their events, and what's remarkable about it is just the community that they build through intergenerational relationships, and it's really spectacular. So I encourage anybody who needs a new thing to do to reach out to Healthy Cities and think about volunteering. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I agree. Wonderful organization, we're fortunate to have them in San Carlos. I don't see any other further comments, so we will move on to council communications and announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. I see Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. I had the opportunity to go on a tour of the Hetch Echee Water System sponsored by the San Francisco PUC a couple of weeks ago. And it was, it was amazing. It's something I've always wanted to do, and I will, I'm happy to report that the, that the dam is full to the rim, but that doesn't mean we should stop conserving water. There is a huge water shortage, as everyone knows, but we are one of several, three counties, I think, other than San Francisco County, that the Hetch Echee Water System serves. And one of the things I learned is that how often the water is checked for purity and quality and drinkability. And we are truly lucky that we have a very safe and reliable water supply. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, this is not really good news, but one of our fellow council members, Anders Fung, who is a council member in Millbrae, was attacked over the weekend up at Land's End in San Francisco. Someone threw a large rock or a brick or something at him, and he was injured and taken to San Francisco Emergency. And it just underscores the difficulty it is sometimes to, to deal with some of the hate that people have, that is still out there. Anders is a, I've, I met him only recently. He's just like all the rest of us, trying to do a good thing for his community. He was with his family, which makes it even more upsetting, but it just goes to show that we have a long way to go as a, as a society to treat everybody with respect. And anyway, I'm wishing him a speedy recovery, and I think he'll be fine.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I just was struck by what my colleague, Ron, had to say about how do we find, when people have hate, where does that get channeled? What, what happens to that? And I would just... And I would just say that the theme that I've heard this evening throughout many things is community building. And what I was going to mention was just last Thursday, we had our San Carlos Volunteer Recognition Event at the Adult Center. And just what an amazing gathering of people who volunteer hours and hours, thousands of hours every year to our community. And what a wonderful community we have, and it's because of people who show up and constructively help to build it. So, I just wanted to call that out. And it was just great to see all the ways we build community here in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I see no further comments, so we will move on to Item 6, Public Comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Please note that each speaker is limited to two minutes. And we will go ahead and take in-person comments if anyone here with us tonight would like to make a public comment. Okay, seeing none. Crystal, is anyone joining by Zoom who would like to make a public comment?
No, I don't see any hands.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Consent Calendar, Items A through I.
Second. Any further discussion?
Only to say thank you to Stephen Maschida for pursuing, getting a hock light at Belmont and El Camino.
Agreed. Okay, Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you, Crystal. We will now move on to Item 8, Reports to Council. We will be receiving an update on trails in San Carlos from Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director.
That was the goal. I'll give you a second to straighten out your maps. Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Rack, council members, and community. My name is Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. And tonight I will be sharing some history on trails in San Carlos, including plans that have been approved, community actions and improvements that have been made, as well as some trail improvements completed in recent years. I'm usually not the first presentation up here, so usually the clicker is already on by the time I get up here. My apologies. Okay, I will start tonight with the Trail Connections Plan. In early 2003, City Council authorized establishment of the Trail Connections Committee as a City of San Carlos Task Force. City Council directed the committee to begin discussions with other agencies regarding possible connections to San Carlos trails. Together, the committee completed the Trail Connections Plan. The Parks and Recreation Commission, at their January 10, 2007 meeting unanimously recommended to City Council approval of the plan. And the City Council approved the Trail Connections Plan on February 12, 2007. This community-led committee began working on connections of existing trails in San Carlos with neighboring agencies and with other trails within San Carlos. The final plan consists of 15 possible trail connections, six of which are within San Carlos, and the remaining are regional connections. Should these potential connections come to fruition, it would facilitate increased health and wellness opportunities, as residents would be able to walk, run, or hike longer distances in adjacent open space parks and trails, including Pulgas Ridge, the Belmont Trail System, San Francisco watershed land, and possibly Edgewood Park. This is the map you have before you this evening, and I understand, and hopefully it's not too difficult to see on screen. Identified on this map are the 15 potential trail connections of the plan. The red dots indicate the top priorities, and the green dots indicate the remaining potential connections. Top priorities include a connection to the Belmont Trail System, Los Vientos to Pulgas Ridge, Devonshire to Crestview, Heather School Area and Highlands Park to Big Canyon Park, the end of Britton to Pulgas Ridge, Cranfield to Club Drive to Wither Ridge, and lastly, Eaton Park to a city-owned parcel off of La Mesa Drive via Loma Road that connects to Edgewood Park. Most efforts that have been made following the Connections Plan began in 2008, when representatives of the Trails Committee held meetings with Los Vientos neighbors to discuss creating a trail access point at Los Vientos Way. Concerns from residents were primarily about the parking. It was recommended that trail users would park on Crestview and take a short walk to the proposed access gate. An alternate recommendation was to install the access gate at the corner of Los Vientos and Crestview Drive, which would provide access to Pulgas Ridge via the Peninsula watershed lands that run parallel to Los Vientos Way. Conversations continued for several years, however, in the end, the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission responded to the city's proposal by stating that while they were in support of opening access to trails, they denied the request to create an access point at the corner of Los Vientos Way and Crestview Drive. So, moving on to another plan called the Hillside Trails Plan. In March 2012, City Council adopted a resolution certifying the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the San Carlos Hillside Trails Plan and adopted a mitigated measures monitoring program in accordance with CEQA for the Hillside Trails Plan. The plan identified 1.55 miles of new trail alignments and provided guidelines and construction protocols for these trails and future hillside trails. The design standards and construction protocols were designed to ensure that trails developed in San Carlos's hillside parks and open space areas are sited so as to minimize potential impacts to sensitive habitat and species and constructed and maintained to protect the watershed from erosion. In September 2012, the community gathered for a ribbon cutting to celebrate the new trails, which included several new bridges. Ron, you were there. You were there, cutting the ribbon. Also was our longtime trail volunteer, Tom Morse, who's joining us tonight. And in more recent years, the city has completed additional improvements to our trail system, including a trail wayfinding project in 2017, which consisted of directional and mileage markers and annual funding for ongoing trail maintenance since 2017. In the following year, trail head maps were updated and new kiosks were installed at Eaton, Big Canyon, and Arguello Parks. Repairs have been made to the stairs at Eaton Park, as well as new bridges in Eaton Park. And new trail segments were recently built in Big Canyon Park. Nearly all of these improvements have been made possible by our community trail volunteer, Tom Morse, joining us tonight, as well as other community volunteer efforts and some assistance that work with Tom. This may be obvious to most, but trails in the community provide many benefits. Access to trails promotes and encourages health and wellness. We are seeing more residents than ever use our trails following the pandemic. Trails also build community. Neighbors are able to meet out on the trail. And additionally, outdoor recreation groups and local businesses have partnered with the city in maintaining and advocating for trails. The preservation of wildlife habitats and maintaining open space is critical in a healthy and vibrant growing community. And lastly, the city becomes or maintains to be a more desirable place to live. And I conclude this evening, there are many possibilities for future improvements of trails in San Carlos. In the San Carlos General Plan, one of the goals states to strive for one mile of trails per 1,000 residents, which would be approximately 30 miles of trails. Improving trails ranked as top-specific improvement desired in the community in the Parks Master Plan needs assessment completed in 2009. And as mentioned before, our trails are being used now more than prior to the pandemic, and people have shifted and created new routines, as people have shifted and created new routines. Depending on the discussion and recommendation tonight and the scope of improvements, additional funding may be necessary for staff to carry out any larger-scale improvements to our trail system. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amy. Questions from council? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, thank you, Amy. A nice presentation, and, you know, I love our parks. The, you had mentioned that we have a city goal of one mile of trail per 1,000 residents, about 30 miles. That would be a lot of trails for our town. But how many miles do we have now? Do we have an inventory of that?
I don't have an exact mileage count.
Five. Oh, my.
I would say more than five. It was in our Parks Master Plan, we have a figure of 8.7 miles. So, that was tracked in 2009. So, we have at least 8.7 miles.
And I think I read somewhere we added like 1.4 since then, or something like that?
We did. So, in the Hillside Trails Plan, we added 1.55 miles of trails. And in recent months and in the last two years, Tom has added at least half a mile of trails.
Okay. All right. Good, you know, that's progress, for sure. And then as we're thinking through this, and we can get into it in discussion, I tend to agree with the priorities laid out. But can you just walk me through, how are they determined, and how do we kind of, you know, on an ongoing basis, determine the priorities here?
I was not a part of the discussion when the priorities were set in the Trail Connections Plan. And in terms of how to set priorities moving forward, I think that's just a discussion amongst council. And I do know that the director, the Parks and Recreation Director in Belmont, we've had a few very surface-level conversations about how we can partner together, and she would be interested in pursuing that with us. And just kind of getting those feelers out to those organizations and those agencies that surround our trail system and where these connections, where we would need to get those agreements in place.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I had.
Thank you, John. Vice Mayor Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Amy, for the presentation. As you know, this is a topic that I'm very interested in. And it's great to have this, or to see the big pictures. I know you and I have talked about this a little bit, but to sort of see this is helpful. I guess sort of dovetailing some of John's questions with, you know, this was done originally in 2003, I think, right? We've done, sort of been a while since we've kind of updated this and looked at it. Is it your sense that sort of we need a refresh to look at that, understand kind of whether, while I understand the priorities and understand what John was saying, like, are there things that may have changed over time that say, gosh, you know, number, I don't know, number 15 might be easier to do now versus, you know, number two? I mean, is it, is that something that's worth taking a look at or having Park and Rec look at and kind of just do a refresh potentially on it?
I would say so, just because these are two plans that I wasn't involved in and that they do date back quite a few years. And particularly, the San Carlos Hillside Trail Plan was created, approved, and completed with the help of Tom and other volunteers and staff. And so, going back to this Trail Connections Plan that was created so long ago, I think it would be valuable to look at that and, you know, further analyze each of those priorities and see if they do still fit within current priorities and.
Okay. I think that's helpful, because I do think, like I said, some stuff has been done, some things have changed, and, you know, the PUC of 2011 might not be the PUC of 2022. And it's been some time. And, you know, just seeing the great potential here and also not realizing how much city-owned property we have in the hillside and what potential there is, I think, is really interesting. And it's not like we're talking about having to, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity to me internally within San Carlos that is there as well to maybe revisit and see. And so, I'd certainly be keen on that. I think that'd be really interesting to look at and see how we can do that. But that's kind of, I have a couple of comments, so I'll just, I'll save those. But from a question, oh, it's my kind of question, is it, makes sense to try to do that? And it's great to hear that you've had some positive conversations with, initial conversations with Belmont, because I do think there's some great opportunity to connect into Belmont and really create a greater system. I know for me, having, just during the pandemic, I've been out in the parks more, walking more, doing more, because it's something that we can do, and we have great trails and great parks. And to be able to expand that opportunity, I think, would be fantastic for our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Thank you. So, I also recognize too that there are, you know, discussions ongoing just throughout the area about the ability to use open space in different ways. And I happen to be in Cupertino-Mountain View area this past week on a hike, and I noted that they were having like an e-bike pilot. Now, I'm not proposing that, but has, as part of this plan in the past, was there any consideration given to use of other, like other modes or ways to recreate in open space besides hiking and running, that type of thing, or any feasibility, right? Because I understand these are on a slope, and they're narrow trails and that type of thing. But I was just wondering if that had ever been discussed.
It's pretty vague in the Parks Master Plan as other recreational opportunities. So, although it kind of leaves that door open as what else could we do in our open space parks, it doesn't cite any specific recreational activity. It just kind of leaves that door open. So, should council want to pursue that, we could also pursue that.
Okay, any further questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll move to public comment, and then we'll have discussion time. So, we will take public comment from members of the audience here. I don't know if Mr. Morse would like to chime in at all. We'd love to hear from you if you'd like to come speak for two minutes.
All right, in regards to other uses for the parks or so-called for things, most of, I've always used the standard of Mid-Penn, Mid Peninsula Open Space District, that the trails that they have available for bicycles or wheeled vehicles, or whatever you want to call it, are four feet wide. And also that ours are not. And I've even had somebody on one of the, I think, the Park Recreation Commission mentioned about that, and I said, if you want to get out there and dig the trails and find out what I do, make it four feet wide, be my guest. You know, it's hard enough to do three feet. You'd be surprised, it takes about 50% more effort from three feet to four feet to do it, to dig into a hillside. And one of the reasons is, if you've noticed, if you walk down a trail and a bicycle comes the other way, you, the handlebars are too wide for that. And most, and I've also found that most city park, trailer, or city parks are all built by volunteers. Mid-Penn, when I worked, I volunteered with Mid-Penn, State, County, and GGNRA, I volunteered with all of those. Those that have the bigger funding, public funding, they can have a machine to go out and just dig it. I average about 10 feet an hour, they can do 10 feet in 10 minutes. So, there's a big difference in how it is done. And volunteers, like I say, do most of the trails. In regards to the, as you said, the 15 so, Trail Connection things, most of them, I've talked with Greg about that, most are a dead issue because they involve going with private property. And that is like, you know, would you mind if I cross your property or go next to your property for building a trail? And, yeah, yeah. And say, okay, he's civil. I mean, I just, he's the closest person to me, just asking, that's probably typical. There's one connection I remember off of La Mesa Drive that goes between two houses and goes down in the open space. I walked that, because I wasn't even aware there is an easement between that. And I walked that, and here's the other issue, is, oh, there's a swimming pool there. Would you want me, or any other person in the public looking into you as you're launching an actually a swimming pool? No. So, that's what I call a dead issue. Somebody think, suggest. Somebody think, suggest another one for Big Canyon Park. Great trail I found, great route, except that the last part, it looks down into somebody's backyard and their living room. Dead issue. And so I always, I always consider it, you have to go with the public. I'm not trying to impose upon somebody. So a lot of those, most of them, I think, 99% of them. And in 2011 or '12 or so, when Doug Long was the Parking Rec Director, after having, what, five years of being the Trails Committee, having meetings monthly, talking about what possibilities and how to do things or whatever, he finally, he just called me in the office privately and said, what can we get done? Because going through all this other stuff, I said, okay, here, I got this possibility to be Eaton Park. And so that trail was built.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Thank you. Do you have any?
But if you want any more questions answered, be my guest.
You're the expert, we know. Yeah. Well, maybe have you weigh in on prioritization going forward or something. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I don't see any other members of the public here with us in person. Crystal, is anyone on Zoom waiting to make a public comment?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. With that, I want to say thank you to Tom Morse for all of your service on our trails. I know it's a labor of love for you and our community just really deeply appreciates your time and effort. So thank you. Thanks very much. We owe you a huge debt of gratitude. I'll open it up to discussion. Vice Mayor Rack.
Sure. And I appreciate all the comments and Tom's comments on things. I do think that, I would like to, I mean, I think there are some things that while going through private property is tougher, but some of the connections through to, to the water property might be an opportunity to go revisit and stuff. So, I mean, I would be interested in having the Park and Rec Commission kind of take another look at this and maybe reprioritize understanding kind of what some of the challenges were before, where there were issues. And then I actually think it would be potentially down the road, maybe not right now, but we should consider having a, potentially a subcommittee of the council to kind of look at this, particularly if there's going to be funding issues and stuff that we would consider, because I do think it's, it's worth, that is, you know, one of the big challenges. So if it's going to be coming into funding, I think maybe looking at that, but having the Park and Rec Commission come take a first pass at it, I think would be a good, personally good next step and to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And boy, I sure would like to thank Tom and his volunteers as well. 10 feet an hour, that's, that, that sounds really impressive in my book. And I, at some point, would like to get your tips and tricks on dealing with poison oak as well. And I will just say, I'm really happy we're, we're potentially looking at this as a council, as a city. You know, we live in just such an amazingly beautiful area and the more opportunity we can get people out and enjoying it and away from, you know, the, the average hectic life here on Mid Peninsula, I think it'll, you know, help all of us, help mental health and everything else. I'm a heavy user of our trails. I run on trails rather regularly and my family and I go up into the trails quite a bit. We love it up in the hills. What I'm struck by though is that, you know, I'm probably in Edgewood Park more than any other park. I'm frequently going through Water Dog Park. And then if you have a dog, obviously the Pogus Ridge Open Space is really perfect. And then we've got that fantastic Crystal Springs Cross Country Course up there. All of that is on our perimeter, which we're just very fortunate, very blessed to have all that. And I just observed that because in a way, we, we don't get a lot of use, in my perception of our own kind of natural parks. And so I really think this prioritization got a lot of things right. I think it's worth revisiting and thinking about, but it is about the connections to these fantastic trail systems that are all around us. So I really like that emphasis and if there is an opportunity to revisit anywhere where we got frustrated. And so I wholeheartedly support this effort. My final comment would be, I appreciate my colleague Laura's comments about, you know, intermodal, maybe getting bikes on some of the trails. And I would just point out, Water Dog, Water Dog Lake Park is just a mecca of mountain bike riding up there. And so I would agree with prioritizing any access we could down into that park, because that would open up all, I think it's about 12 or 13 miles of just world-class mountain bike riding over there. I used to do that as well, but I value my life and limb a little too much now. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Palmer Lohann.
Thank you. I'd like to thank, I believe it was Vice Mayor Rack for bringing this item forward, if I'm not mistaken. So thank you for that. I would be open to taking another look at this and seeing how we could make some enhancements. And in terms of the prioritization, it's curious that, I don't know how the priorities were made, but it sounds like because there's external parties, maybe the way to, criteria to consider would be the willingness of those external parties to work with us and maybe revisit them rather than just stopping just because we got to know from a large agency up north. Maybe we could try to find those partners who would be willing to see the bigger picture and the value associated with doing this. And, and then if there's other ideas too, to, you know, improve the, the safety and profile and access just in general for these parks, I think that would be something interesting for us to think about from a Parks and Recreation perspective. And I like the idea of having the commission kind of initiate this effort and then we can figure out how to, you know, what we want to do and how to appropriate funds.
Thank you, Laura. I concur with everything Laura said. I too want to thank the Vice Mayor for bringing this forward. I think this is very timely for us to start discussing and I think it's a great idea to have the Parks and Rec Commission take a look so, and do, do some work for us. And looking forward to hearing their, their feedbacks. So I think that we have general agreement. Is there anything further that you'd like to hear from council, Amy? Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And the huge maps. Okay. With that. We will now move on to item nine, public hearing. This is consideration of introducing an ordinance amending municipal code chapter 18 to adjust the city density bonus, inclusionary housing requirements, affordability periods, parking for affordable units, and making other conforming amendments. And with us is Adam Aronson, Economic Development and Housing Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Adam Aronson. I am the city's Economic Development and Housing Manager. And so before you tonight, we have the below market rate ordinance update. You'll recall that we came before you in a study session a few months ago. And about a month ago, we held a public hearing with the Planning Commission and it is their recommendations that are before you tonight. So I want to first start with a brief overview of the agenda for this item. We'll start by looking at our waitlist and our BMR unit inventory as a refresher. We'll then look at our current inclusionary requirements and the recommended changes, followed by potential changes to the density bonus, additional BMR ordinance revisions within fall, which include the threshold to construct a BMR unit, affordability periods, items to help address unbundled parking for affordable units. And then these are new since the study session, but unit size requirements and unit location So starting with the makeup of our affordable housing waitlist, we pull households from this list to fill the BMR units in San Carlos. We currently have over 4,500 households on that waitlist, 98% of which are at low income or below. 61% of those households are one or two persons, 18% are three persons, and 21% are four or more persons. Looking at our BMR inventory makeup, breaking it down in the far left, you'll see by the number of bedrooms in the unit, 20% of our units are studios, 38% are one bedrooms, 25% are two bedrooms, and 17% are three bedrooms. In the middle table, you'll see the breakdown by income levels, 37% of our units are very low income, 39% low income, and 24% moderate income. And then on the far right, you can see the breakdown between rental units and ownership units, with currently 67% of our units as rental units and 33% of our units as ownership So looking at our existing inclusionary requirements and the Planning Commission's recommendations, on the left at the top, you'll see the existing requirements for ownership projects, which is currently that 10% of the units have to be moderate income and 5% have to be low income for a total of 15% overall. And we found that that's generally on par with neighboring cities. However, the research we have done has shown, and the Planning Commission has recommended, that we change that requirement to 20% and all at low income. So we're both increasing the number of units and deepening the level of affordability. And we believe that this would increase the number of units while still maintaining the financial feasibility of these types of projects. Now, on the rental side, our requirements are currently 10% at very low income and 5% at low income, also for a total of 15% overall, but at much deeper levels of affordability. And what we have found is that this is more aggressive than neighboring cities. And so for this reason, the Planning Commission has recommended that we maintain our present policy, but that we also highlight the 15% very low income alternative. And what that does is it maximizes the state density bonus and achieves the full 50% bonus. We're not recommending that as the standard because there are many projects that don't want to utilize the full bonus. So we don't necessarily want to make it a requirement, but if they wish to do so, they So with this in mind, we looked at a number of ways for how can we approve the feasibility of rental projects since it already appears fairly difficult at our current requirements. And from our conversations with developers and other constituents, what we have found and what the Planning Commission has recommended is an increase to our city density bonus. Now, the city density bonus is currently one bonus unit for every low income unit or below, but it's very rarely utilized because the state density bonus is almost always a more favorable bonus to the project. What the Planning Commission has recommended is enhancing that city density bonus to offer four bonus units for every very low income unit and two bonus units for every low income unit. In this table, you can see the impact that would have compared to the state and city density bonus. So on the far right, our current city density bonus in a hypothetical 100-unit project that had 10 very low income units and five low income units would get 15 bonus units. Conversely, under the current state density bonus, that project would get 33 bonus units. Under this enhanced city density bonus, that same project would get 50 bonus units, helping to improve the feasibility of the project. One item I do want to note with this is that while we would be enhancing the city density bonus, developers would still be able to utilize the state density bonus to obtain concessions. So we can't prevent a development project from utilizing the state bonus. They'd be able to use both. They can't, what we would not allow is them to use the city bonus if they're already using the state bonus for extra units. Now, with this in mind, the Planning Commission did recommend this enhanced city density bonus, but they also requested that the council consider refining this bonus at a later date through an affordable housing overlay zone. And so what an affordable housing overlay zone is, is it's a geographically defined area within the community where you establish incentive-based items that can help to improve the development of housing and affordable housing in particular. So incentives can conclude a number of things. It could be the enhanced city density bonus, as we mentioned, but it could also be impact fee waivers, reduce parking ratios, reduce setback requirement height standards, as well as buy right zoning. If this is the option the council would like us to consider, the staff believes it'd probably take us about a year to develop a recommended overlay zone. There are also a number of additional BMR ordinance revisions. And so first one is the BMR threshold. So we would lower the requirement to build a BMR unit from seven units to five units in ownership developments, but it would still remain seven units in rental developments. We also would adjust affordability periods to be in perpetuity. So currently, our code states they can be not less than 45 years for ownership units and not less than 55 years for rental units. And we would also look at changes to address unbundled parking issues. And the, the goal behind this is to improve fair access to parking for BMR residents in market rate developments. So what we would do is we would define rent to include all fees paid for parking and require that BMR units be offered to me such as parking at rates equivalent to those of market rate units. And then in ownership projects, we'd require that BMR units include parking spaces at a ratio equivalent to that of market rate units. And then that parking space would have to be included within the affordable sale price. So those tenants or those residents wouldn't see an increased sale price. They would see the same sale price they would have seen previously. And then these are a few changes that we did not highlight during the study session, so we wanted to draw your attention to them today. And the first is related to unit size requirements. So we've adjusted the language in our code to state that below market units must in aggregate be no smaller in average size than market rate units in the same development. And then the ratio of bedrooms has to also be the same as it is for the market rate units. We've also made changes to the unit location requirements language to further reinforce that the units have to be evenly dispersed by both floor and general location throughout a project, and then must also have the same access to common spaces and entrances as the market rate units. So on this page, you can see the summary of the Planning Commission recommendations. For ownership projects, we'd increase the BMR requirement to 20% of units, all at low income. For rental projects, there'd be no change to the current BMR requirements, but we would highlight the 15% very low income alternative to maximize state density bonus. And then the enhanced city density bonus would offer four bonus units for every very low income unit and two bonus units for every low income unit. And then we would also lower the requirement to build a BMR unit from seven to five units for ownership projects, change affordability periods to run in perpetuity, and then address issues related to unbundled parking for BMR units. The next steps, if the ordinance is adopted tonight, the second reading would occur on June 27th, and then the new requirements would go into effect 30 days after adoption. So that'd be July 27th. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Adam, for your presentation. Questions from council? Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Adam. I really do appreciate all the work we're doing on this. It's, I think, a really strong update to our BMR ordinance. A quick question, you know, I think one of the most impactful things we're potentially doing tonight is increasing the BMR covenants to run in perpetuity as opposed to the 45, 55-year periods. And I do worry though about our current inventory of affordable housing. Do we have any sense of, you know, kind of the waterfall of when we're going to start losing the, our existing stock of affordable housing because of those existing covenants?
Most of those projects, I would say, are still 10 to 20 years out at this point. The fortunate situation that we're in is the larger 100% affordable projects, they're all managed by current affordable housing developers that are interested in extending those affordability periods. So that's what's happening, that's what's happening at the Cherry Street project, for example. The more difficult situation is in rental projects where it's a market rate project and there's just a few units, those ones we don't have control over them. But we haven't had our BM ordinance in place for that long and there weren't too many projects that preceded it. So we don't have any that are coming up soon.
Okay. I appreciate that. And on those 100% projects, you know, were they ever covenanted in perpetuity? I mean, because those are almost like planned developments, right? I mean, they're, that's sort of an agreement. I know they're held by these nonprofit organizations that, that intend to keep them, but are they actually required to keep those?
I don't believe they were covenanted to be in perpetuity and part of the reason for that is for the tax credit financing. It's not always allowed by the federal government or the state government. In order for individuals to invest for those tax credits, there has to be some sort of sunset on the requirements. But the intention has always been by those developers to continue to keep them as affordable. But we don't have a specific requirement that they be indefinite.
Got it. I appreciate that. And then I appreciated your, your comment that we'll be careful that the city, if we do adopt a city density bonus, that a developer can't stack that on top of the state density bonus. But are we confident in that position? I mean, because it seems to me the state density bonuses are intended to just augment whatever you can otherwise do under the city code. And I'm just curious, are we sure that under what we're proposing tonight, that those couldn't be stacked?
So essentially, what, what we'd be doing is, we can't say no to anything within the state bonus. So if someone pursues the state density bonus, that's at the will of the state, it's out of our control essentially. What we can do is we can say, okay, you've done the state bonus, but you can't also do the city density bonus. And that's our way of preventing them from being stacked on top of each other.
I see. So our, our bonus, our city bonus would not be an entitlement, it's something we could allow? Is that right?
We, we could say, we're not going to give it to you. And the way it's structured in the code is, you're entitled to the city density bonus if you're not already receiving. if you're not already receiving the state density bonus.
I see, I see. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adam, thanks for the presentation, for all the work on this. I think in gen, like, I like most of what I see with this. I had a couple of questions and one, a couple small questions, and then on the, so essentially what we're just, I understand, sorry, for the parking, we're basically not allowing unbundling for BMR units. Is that accurate to say it that way, or is that?
It's a, it's a way to look at it, yeah.
Is that accurate? Because that's what I would like to do if we're going to do it, and just say you can't unbundle the parking for BMR units that are, that are allowed to get them.
I would say it's accurate, but we have to put certain structures behind it to still allow unbundled parking for the market-rate units.
For market rate, yeah, I'm assuming only on the BMR side, because I think we had that issue before where we had a developer wanting to unbundle the BMR units. We said no. And I just, to me, it's, for many people, it's probably already challenging enough. And then to, and if they have cars and they need to park, you know, I want to make it as easy and as cost-effective for people who qualify.
Yeah, and essentially what we're doing is we're saying the parking has to be free for the BMR units, but we're leaving the window open so that if there's a project that has fewer parking units than parking spaces than there are units, there might be some BMR units that don't get a parking space, but it would have to be the same as the market-rate units.
So if they, if, whatever that percentage is, basically, or if they only get three-quarters of a unit, or whatever that number is. Okay. And I know that there is a, a bill that is moving through the state legislature to eliminate parking minimums. So how would this, if that were to pass, how does that affect our ability to protect those BMR units?
That's correct. I believe it's AB 2097, and from what we've heard, it sounds.
Passed the assembly already.
And it's likely to continue going as well.
I hope not, but, okay.
And our understanding is that essentially, within half-mile of active transit stations, we wouldn't be able to impose any minimum parking requirements. And so that would be the Caltrain station and likely all of the bus stops on El Camino Real. And that would impede our ability somewhat. We would still be able to, I believe, protect those BMR units that are getting parking spaces, but the number of units that are getting spaces would probably be less. It would be dependent on a market-rate developer still wanting to provide some parking.
Okay. I would be, from my perspective, be really interested to understand kind of the impact potentially on us on those projects, because it, I'm not trying to, I don't want to agendize this, but I'm just saying, I would like to get this information because I think it would be helpful for us to understand that potential impact of that, of that bill. So, and then the next question I have is, on the, on the overlay district, for some of the things that we were, have talked about doing in terms of increasing density and height, do we, do we need the overlay district to do that, or can we go ahead and do that sooner? I'm just, you know, I prefer not to wait another year to do that kind of stuff if, because it feels like we're holding back potential for more housing.
So it's possible to do many of those adjustments through the housing element update that's happening right now.
Right.
And so that's up to the discretion of the council, whether you'd prefer to do that. But if there's items perhaps that you want to do through the housing element, but then you also want to go beyond for certain areas, you could do that through an overlay zone later.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. I just had one last question, because I don't want to over, go over my number, if the mayor will allow me. The one area that I'm struggling with is on the separate, the city density bonus, city bonus that we're talking about doing, because I feel like we're, I feel like it misses the mark, and I want to understand a little more. You, in the, in the presentation, you talk about the biggest need is low-income housing. And I assume you mean low at that level low, not extremely low or extra-low. But yet, the bonus is promoting extra-low housing. So it feels like we're not lined up on that. And then I'm worried that if we take these units and we say, in the 100 example and the 50, we're not talking about increasing height or density with that, just saying you can have more units on the existing footprint. I feel like we're going to focus on only having studios and one-bedrooms. And it doesn't meet the overall mix of the community that we need, because we, obviously, I know that we have a large list of studios and one-bedrooms that are needed, but we also need two-bedroom, three-bedrooms that are part, I think that number you had was like 40%. And if we're going to be pushing that bonus, seems like we're not hitting the low-income which people need, that we need, need. And then we're also not getting the mix of units that way. So to me, I'd almost like to see how we could promote, use the bonus to promote a better mix of units versus just saying, hey, if you hit this number, we're going to let you build 50% more, potentially. So I'm struggling with that bonus as how that hits and gets us what we need. So there's a question in there somewhere on that, on how, you know, sort of, can you just sort of explain how you came to that? And I understand the Planning Commission felt that was a good approach. I just, I just feel like it misses the mark.
So the way the bonus is structured, it's for, there's a very low component and then a low component. So it's four bonus units for very low income and then two bonus units for low income. So you're getting a greater bonus for the very low-income units. So theoretically, that is the one that is more likely to be pursued, but there might be some projects where they prefer to have the low-income units. The reason those specific levels were chosen and for those numbers is because that's where we started to see increased feasibility for rental projects. Anything below that, we weren't seeing enough of an increase to make it worthwhile for developers to go beyond the state density bonus. With regards to the mix by the number of bedrooms, I think that that might be something that would have to happen beyond the below-market rate ordinance, and I'm not sure what our ability is to say you have to build these types of bedrooms necessarily.
Okay, so, but I guess what I, just to follow up on that, when the proposal is that, with this, I understand for this, unless I'm misreading this, for the city density bonus, right, we're, we're talking about, so you're saying that if we do, the current mix would be 10 and 5, right? So, but, but to me, it should almost be reversed because the need is greater on the low-income versus the extremely low, based on the data you sent, that, I think you said, if I read this, you say that the 98% are at low income or below, but can we, I mean, what's the breakdown of that? Are we, that's why I'm not sure we're hitting the mark on that, because it says, you know, 98% is low income or below. Is 60% of that low income, or is 60% of that extremely low? That's what I'm trying to understand, kind of, are we, is that mix right? And then I'm worried about not being able, not, you know, just try to jamming more units into an existing property, we're going to get a lot of studios and one-bedrooms. That's kind of my, sort of the two-part on this. So I guess if I had better understanding of that, what that 98% breakout is, that would help me better understand it. And just sort of my concern about, we're going to just jam a lot of small units in and not meet sort of a mix. But I mean, other than that, I think the, many of the other, the other things, I think, are really positive improvements, and I appreciate all the work that's done on that. So thank you.
Okay, we'll continue with questions. Those are good questions. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Thank you. So I think, kind of in a slightly similar vein as Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Rack. So I know we had made some adjustments to this since the last time we talked. I'm wondering if you went back to developers and talked to them about some of these changes to understand kind of what the relative appeal would be, you know, with, with these changes. So if council accepted all of these, you know, recommended changes, do you have a sense of how developers, would, would they be incented to come into our community and start building housing, I think is the quick question?
So yeah, we've spoken to a number of developers, and our, what we've heard from each of those meetings and conversations is that increased density and height is the thing that helps them the most. There's other areas that help them as well, but a lot of that, such as, you know, reductions to parking or setback requirements, they can already get through the state density bonus. And so they're looking for items that would go beyond what's in the state density bonus currently.
And those things would be?
The increased height and density that's in.
That specifically?
In the enhanced city density bonus.
All right. And what's remarkable about the waitlist is that our RENA number is around 2,700, and we've pushed that up to about 3,200. And I know we've asked this before, but do we have a sense of kind of how contemporary that list is? So in other words, are those people still circulating and hoping to live here, or have they made other choices and moved on and moved out of the area? Do you happen to have any sense in terms of the, I guess, you know, real number of people? I think getting to Councilor, or Vice Mayor Rack's point, right, are we designing our ordinance to build the mix of product that would serve the community that is wanting to live here?
So I would say the numbers that are on that waitlist, the vast majority on there are still actively searching for housing. When we do have a unit come up and we do our outreach, the first 100 or so people on that waitlist, you get a number who aren't, they're looking for something particular and aren't necessarily in a great need for housing immediately, or they've moved on and aren't interested. But once we get past that, everyone to reach out to is very interested in anything that becomes available.
Thank you.
Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's better when you go later because some of my questions get eliminated. So thanks to Adam and Laura, that was taken care of. There was one thing, though, that I wanted to ask about. It was, let me just find it. It was this, ah, where you said that, there's a, the heading, "Find Ways to Incentivize Developers to Include Affordable Housing Units." You said, "The staff, as well as city's consultant team, have spoken with a number of developers to gather their feedback." And apparently, the options that we have are already available, and it's like they don't know about it to, to develop, you know, the, the additional housing through the state density bonus. And I'm wondering, have we just not advertised it? Have we done, not done a good job of explaining it? I was just puzzled by.
I think there's, there's a few things behind that. The first is, I would say, developers are becoming more aware of it. And a lot of what has changed is, about a year ago, the state density bonus was changed to increase the bonus level. The max used to be 35%, and now it's 50%. And I think that caught a lot of attention, and so more developers are looking into it. But we, we do still occasionally have developers come in who aren't aware of it and aren't aware of it as a possibility. And when that does happen, we try to raise it and make sure people are aware of it as an option. But that's not something that we've always done. That's been a more recent change.
Okay. The next thing was, you mentioned that, I mean, there's this part in here about requiring that BMR units be dispersed evenly throughout the units. I'm going to ask, what is, probably sounds like a naive question, but does that happen in practice where they shove them all into one end, or they, you know, they put them in the, they put them below ground? Has that been a, has that been a rampant practice, or, you know, used, been a practice that's been in use enough that we need to put this kind of language in our ordinance?
I wouldn't say it's been rampant in San Carlos, but there certainly are attempts to do it. Our, the language in our code previously did say that they had to be dispersed, but it wasn't necessarily strong enough in the way that it is now, where we can say, like, it has to be by floor, it has to be by part of the building, whereas previously, they might say, oh, we're going to put most of them on the first floor, but a couple in different areas. And I think the changes we've made now help to protect against that.
Okay. And then, this is sort of a big-picture question, because what I hear the rest of the council asking, and forgive me if I've sort of misread what my colleagues are saying, is that, are we getting close, are, is this getting, is this significantly moving the needle in all the changes that we're making? Is this, you know, is this, is halfway there, most of the way there, all the way there? And I realize that, you know, some people want to tweak it here and there. But are these significant enough changes that we're going to see a real difference when, or assuming that, say, we don't make any changes and all these get implemented as-is?
I believe it is. It makes a number of development projects much more feasible compared to what they are today. I will say that is, then probably combined with the housing element updates that are happening. I think the two together will make a significant difference. There are still market factors out there, like increased construction costs and the fact that our land parcels are pretty small in San Carlos. And those will continue to be issues, but I think that these changes make those less of an issue than they are today.
Yeah, and those things are just beyond our control. So, and you feel that the, the developers are generally in favor of these things? In other words, are they, are they, are these changes attractive enough to them to say, yeah, we think that now we can do business in San Carlos?
We believe they are.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had some good questions. I have a few to follow up on, some of my colleagues' questions. The first one, we've been talking a lot about the housing element update. When is council going to get a first look at that?
I'm not sure about first look. I might defer to Al on that question. But I understand adoption is looking at in the winter, late this year, early '23.
Okay. Does that come to us before you do the first submittal to the state? Okay. Because we're, most likely. Okay, thanks, Al. Because we're also looking at increasing height and density in the housing element, too. So I think that would be, that's, that's an important thing to keep in the mix as we're talking about density and height and things that we're trying to change, because I feel like we are throwing a lot in the mix right now. And I, too, have questions about the city density bonus. So with the four-to-one ratio, the extra four units that a developer would get, those are not BMR units, correct? They're market rate. And can we, I saw some language in here from the Planning Commission about with the BMR units, making sure they're no smaller than the regular units and proportional. Can we apply that same language to bonus units? Such that, I have the same concern as Adam, that the bonus units are all going to turn into efficiencies and studios, and they're just going to be smushed into this project to get as many units as possible, whereas it would be more useful, I think, for our community if they were proportional to the rest of, you know, if they had two bedrooms and three bedrooms as well.
In terms of size and number of bedrooms and location requirements, we can still apply it to the bonus units. What we can't do is apply the affordability levels to the bonus units.
Right, because they would be market rate. Okay. Have you heard of other communities doing that with their city density bonus?
We have heard of a few. The legal counsel advice that we have received is that we should not do that, in that those communities, they have been able to do it so far, but that HCD is tracking them and likely to come down on them eventually.
And then my other question was regarding, we're keeping the threshold for requiring a BMR unit to be built at seven for rental developments, but decreasing the threshold from seven to five for ownership. What is the reasoning behind the keeping it at seven for rentals?
Essentially because we're keeping it at 15%. So 15% of seven units is one.
I see, okay. Okay, that's it for my questions. I'll have more for discussion. Any other questions until, before we open it up? Okay. We'll now open it up to public comments. I don't see any members of the public left with us this evening in person, so we will go ahead to Zoom. If you're participating by Zoom, you may raise your hand now to make a public comment about the specific item. Crystal, is anyone waiting for public comment?
Yes, we do have one speaker. David Tuzman, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name is David Tuzman. Good evening to the council and staff. Thank you very much for this presentation and all the work that's been done on this in the last many months. I think this is a really good step forward in, as staff was saying, that this does bring feasibility to otherwise infeasible projects, that then we can have more units and more affordable units to house more people in our city that we know is sorely needed. And so I'd really urge the council to approve this action, and I would also second the mayor's question of when the draft of the housing element will be ready. I've been waiting to see that for some time, and I do think it's important to hear about this all in the context of the housing element and the other plans going on. Also want to echo some of the comments that the planning commissioners made as they voted to recommend this path. And Commissioner Clemens had noted that the, this affordability that the density bonus encourages is in itself a community amenity of affordability that we get to bring to the community that the developer is providing. And I think that's really good. Another commissioner also noted that when there's a decision... also noted that when there's a decision whether to include the density bonus or just have the inclusionary zoning update, is that without the density bonus, this didn't seem to affirmatively further fair housing, which is part of the important part of RENA and the housing element. And actually, providing this strong incentive to build that inclusion and affordability is an important part of this. And so again, I'd urge you to approve this, and thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Crystal, is anyone else waiting?
Yes, we do have another hand up from Alexandra Melendres. If you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, San Carlos City Councils and city staff. My name is Alex Melendres, and I am an organizing manager for Peninsula for Everyone. It's a chapter of YMB Action whose mission is to work to create an inclusive and sustainable peninsula by advocating for building more homes, better transportation, and protecting renters. I sent a really late email, so I'm mostly just going to reiterate some of my points there. First off, I really want to echo the previous commenter's comments. David's a member of ours. I'm right, I'm in strong support of what the recommendations were with the San Carlos Planning Commission. In my prior experience working on affordable housing policy, in my current work at YMB Action, these kind of recommendations from what the planning commissioner presented are the exact kind of policy implementations that develop, incentivize, and create more affordable homes. Additionally, flexibilities like these don't just promote the creation of affordable, affordable homes. I want to kind of humanize this. They directly translate to roofs over heads. I want to, you, all of you must have seen a story recently or within the last year of somebody, you know, going unhoused, of housing stability, housing instability, or a personal story you've heard from a community member walking the street or a family member, you know, suffering from either being unhoused or the costly burden of rent. What could have been done to prevent that story from happening? What could have helped that person down the line? This is the kind of policy and long-term planning that prevents, you know, that story from happening to more human beings. It does the opposite. It creates affordable, stable communities where they would not prior, where they would not exist prior. It is a good thing, and it can serve as a model for other cities in San Mateo County. So I'm very highly encouraged, encouraged by what I see, and I ask that you please approve the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Crystal, do we have another speaker?
No, there are no more hands.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to the members of the public for joining us. I'll open it up to council discussion.
Madam Mayor, I think we need a motion to close a public hearing, which I'm happy to do.
Great, please. Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Who would like to lead off our discussion? Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Great, thank you. I'd just like to thank staff for bringing this forward, a very intricate and detailed proposal, and the Planning Commission for also weighing in on it, the stakeholders that were interviewed to help us get to where this is, the public for sharing their perspective, and also for council to continuing to make housing affordable and making that a priority in our community. We started our convening tonight, talking about the importance of community and inclusion. And I think there's, you know, nothing more profound than ensuring that all community members who live, who want to live and serve in our community have that opportunity to do so. A community is made stronger when everyone is included, including teachers and first responders, healthcare workers, grocery store clerks, civil servants, seniors, people with intellectual developmental disabilities. And I'm in support of these measures and actions that hopefully will be taken this evening, and I'd like to see us do more, and invite us to be open and actively listening. Again, if this were to pass tonight, and we implement it, and we get feedback from the community that we need to make continued adjustments, that we continue to do that until we get it right. I also heard something intriguing tonight, that there's a lack of awareness among developers about some of these opportunities for making these projects pencil out in a meaningful way. So if it's at all possible, and I know it's not necessarily in the scope of this particular ordinance, but if consideration could be made to promoting what San Carlos has proactively to developers, and walking them through what the opportunities are with our community to really inspire and accelerate coming to our community to build more housing, I would really appreciate that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, Adam and Al, Team Andrea, thanks for all the work on this. It's, I know it's, you put a lot of time and effort into it, and thank you for fielding my, my questions. So I think, I think there are many things on here that I'm very happy to support. I would love to see the housing element and the density and height changes that we're going to make move as quickly as possible. I do think that will help to move the margin even more as things go on. I look forward to seeing that sooner. I would hope that, and this is maybe somewhat of a question or a request, that if we haven't done it, I do think it would be good to try to understand that 4,500 person or household waitlist, to understand, you know, I think it would be good to update it, and kind of make sure we go through it to understand that it's accurate and that we are, so we have a good, an up-to-date understanding of what the community needs are, because I think that's important as we move forward. I know that might not be the, I don't know how difficult that would be to do, but I do think that would be helpful to have that kind of data. And then, I think that the only thing I'm struggling with is this enhanced city density bonus, because I, I am not convinced that we're meeting the exact need in the community. And I worry that we're going to get a lot of, you know, if we've got 40% of the waitlist that, you know, if we take that as accurate, is for two, you know, for two and three bedrooms, if we're going to, people are going to, developers are going to use this enhanced city density bonus, I just don't see how we're adding more two- and three-bedroom units as part of that bonus. It's going to be a lot of studios and one-bedrooms. And while there is a need for that, I, I'm struggling because I do feel like we need to find the right balance on that. So I personally think that that piece is something we should either try to pull out and try to work a little more on, and then kind of bring that, if we can bring that piece back separately. I don't have a problem with the, you know, the numbers and trying to make it all work. I do think it's an important incentive, but, you know, and maybe it works better once we have the height and density fixed, you know, when we update that as part of that. So that's the one piece I'm struggling with. Everything else, I think, is a great step forward, and I look forward to supporting that. I guess I'd want to understand from my colleagues whether, you know, there are things we can look at to try to change that one particular piece. But everything else, I think, is a great step forward, and I appreciate the work on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Housing has been a top goal of our community, of our city, of our city staff and of this council for several years now. And we came into this important exercise with a couple top expectations, one, or observations. One, we need more below-market-rate units in town. Two, we'd like to encourage rental unit development over condo unit development. And three, below-market-rate units need to be respected and developed equitably. And each adjustment before us tonight fixes something that, that we saw as a problem during my time on the Planning Commission. We actually saw developers, you know, do things that we were hopeful could be guided in a direction that would, would meet these top goals. So I'm very proud of what I believe we're going to do here this evening. We take housing seriously in San Carlos, and this update to our below-market-rate ordinance represents a solid piece of leadership on a vital issue for our community. And in particular, I hope other cities in San Mateo County will look to extend their BMR covenants into perpetuity as we're doing here tonight, because all this, these healthy adjustments we're making, we're also, I think, most importantly, making it so the below-market-rate covenants will, will last forever now and not just for a couple decades. And I'm very proud of what, what we're getting done here this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you, Adam, Al, Andrea, all the work that the Planning Department has done. This has been a long, a long process. I know John and I had at least a couple meetings, and I know John's probably spent a lot of time in Al's office or on the phone with him. Also want to thank the Planning Commission. You know, they do a lot of heavy lifting. They go through this stuff in a lot of depth. So I really appreciate that the work, the work that they've done. I also believe this is probably the most significant move in making housing more available and developer-friendly and, and ultimately affordability-friendly to our residents in the entire time I've been on the council. So I think it's really important to, you know, that we move it along, you know, we can, we can tweak it down the road. I think we need to find out, see how it works. And I, Adam, I appreciate your comments. I think, you know, it's probably worth looking at. I'm not sure that we ought to pull anything out right now, but that's just my feeling. I, I think it's really important that, that we move it along. So as I said, we can, we can refine it down the road. Other requirements are going to come in, I suspect. You know, the state's very active, and we may need to change this all over again, right? We're going to be redoing, we're redoing a lot of things right now. The housing element, this, we have SB 9 to deal with. So a lot of stuff on, on everybody's plate. So I think this, though, is something that we should probably act on, and then let's see how it goes, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. I've appreciated everyone's comments, and I, too, want to thank Al and Adam and Andrea and our staff for, this is very comprehensive, and it's something that we have been talking about for a long time. So I appreciate all of the ideas that have come forward, and there's a lot of ideas that we're considering, a lot of different really important improvements that we're making. I think we have a lot to be proud of with changing the affordability periods to run in perpetuity, like John said. I think that's really wise. I appreciate that we're ensuring BMR units have parking under unbundled parking strategies. I especially appreciate changing the inclusionary requirement for ownership to 20% low income. I've said this before, but owning a home is a means to accumulate generational wealth. So this is an important aspect of our BMR ordinance that I'm glad is being included. For me, the gold standard is having a healthy mix of housing in our community. That's something that I keep coming back to, is that, you know, my preference is to have a healthy mix, and I want to make sure that, you know, people can move into our community as a single young person in, you know, a studio, and then, you know, they might find a partner and start a family, and then they need to move into a bigger unit of two and three bedrooms, and then maybe they retire and they downsize back down. So I would love to see our families and our young people able to stay in our community and transition through different housing types. So that's, like, top of mind for me. And I think that's also why I'm struggling a little bit with the city density bonus, because I do feel like we're tackling height and density through our housing element update. And I, I'd love to see that a little bit more and understand how that plays out and what we're successful with changing, and how the market responds to that, to the housing element update, before we try something else that's a really big idea. And I, too, am just, I would love to see, and I don't know if this exists, but how do we model out this city density bonus to make sure that if we're allowing the four-to-one ratio, that we're not somehow tipping the project back to all studios or a significant amount of studios because the developer is now incentivized to cram a bunch of units into a building instead of having that healthy mix? So I'm, so those are kind of the unintended consequences that I'm trying to think through with the city density bonus. I'm certainly very supportive of housing. I want to make sure that, you know, we are attracting more developments. But I think that's the one, the one thing that I'm, I'm trying to think through as well. So, but everything else I support. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate the, the questions around what will the density bonus yield us, the city density yield. And I appreciate that, because what I'm hearing you say is, you know, from a product marketer perspective, which is kind of what I was trained on in my vocation, it's all about, you know, what are you designing and will that be, right? But as I look at these numbers, with 4,500 people on the waitlist, I just did some quick calculations. So our expected inventory for below-market rate, and this goes to slide, I think it's slide three, Adam, that you shared with us, we have expected 23 studios in the pipeline. Twenty one-bedroom are expected for a total of 74. But we need 2,745 to meet demand for the 4,500 people on the waitlist, with 2,700 of those at low income. So anything that gets built is going to make a difference, right? And so I personally don't want to let good, perfect get in the way of good. Is that the phrase? I feel like we need to take action, and we need to do so quickly. And then, as we hear back from developers and see what comes of this, and we build out our housing element, which I know staff has signaled to us that that will include height and density changes in our zoning, then, then we can potentially, you know, look at this again. But if this is what developers are telling us will help them in the meantime, I think it would be worthwhile pursuing, right? So I just feel a real sense of urgency around this, and feel like this, this has been a very thoughtful and analytical approach has been taken. And again, it may not be perfect, but it's in a great direction. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate all the comments that, on that particular issue. I guess I would like to maybe offer a suggestion on this particular piece, is if we could maybe go through that household list to make sure it's accurate and up-to-date, you know, maybe just kind of scrub it and see where people, I think the Councilwoman Palmer Lohan asked a question like, how many people have moved on, other things, and I'm not sure we, I don't know how often you do that, or just kind of adds on and people get taken off. But, and then I would be interested in maybe, you know, getting some more data on this, doing a little more work on this particular piece of the enhanced city density bonus, and have the staff and Planning Commission take another look at that piece. I think we should move forward with what we're doing tonight as-is. And I think, you know, look, it's 90% there. In my view, I think for some people, it's 100% there. That's fine. I'm not going to, I think I'm happy to get 90% and, and move on. But I would like that one little piece to get looked at again, because we can always come back and amend it and change that if it's, if we sort of get more data and understand, say, hey, this isn't the right way to do, do it. Or you can come back and tell me that it is the right way. It is what, it is going to make the most impact. So that's, that would be what I would suggest, if people are open to that.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate all those sentiments, Adam, and Sarah, you as well. I think it is, you know, there's a lot in this, a lot of analytics went into it. But, you know, it's a complicated area, and we likely will have to make adjustments. As Ron pointed out, the state's going to have a say in all this as well. So I'm completely on board with moving forward tonight, but having an open mind if we need to revisit this in a year and make adjustments as needed. And, and I think there's also an opportunity for us to make adjustments as we think through the overlay, isn't there, of how this will be applied? So I think we have a lot of opportunities to make tweaks and adjustments, and I fully support continuing to look at this.
Okay. Well, I will, I fully support, I have a sense of urgency as well, and I'm support moving forward, and maybe we just flag special care for the city density bonus to, to give it a little more study as we see projects coming forward. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. With that, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1583.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending municipal code Chapter 8
Chapter 18 to adjust the city density bonus, inclusionary housing requirements, affordability periods, parking for affordable units, and making other conforming amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, I see it's 8:48. Would anyone like a 10-minute break before we're moving on, or should we move on?
I would rather push on. I think we might get through this one pretty quickly.
Great. We'll move on to item 9B, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18 zoning consisting of modifications to Chapter 18.23.210 accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units. And we have Andrea Martisich chair.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Andrea Martisich, Principal Planner. This next item before you is a public hearing for proposed changes to the junior accessory dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit ordinance. On October 26th of 2020, the council adopted an ordinance in response to bringing accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as well as junior accessory dwelling units, or JDUs, into compliance with several state laws. Since this time, staff has identified several barriers to construction, and as a result, has several changes proposed for you this evening. On April 18th, the Planning Commission reviewed a draft ordinance and recommended council adoption of these changes. And then on May 9th, we had a council study session on those proposed changes. And I do want to point out that the draft ordinance in your pocket this evening does have the same recommendations as that night, and I'll discuss that a little bit more as we get through the presentation. And one thing that arose out of that night was a request for additional information on reverse corner lots, as well as some information on what neighboring cities are doing. Again, wanted to mention why we're doing this. One of council's goals for housing is to increase housing production. We believe that these changes as proposed will not only reduce some barriers, but will, in effect, make the approval of these units occur quicker as well by providing certainty in the applications and the back and forth that happens with applicants. Prior to reviewing the changes, you'll remember this slide from last time, just in case anyone's watching, a quick definition of the two types of units. Both JDUs and ADUs are independent living units. JDUs can be no more than 500 square feet and must be proposed either as a conversion of existing space or included as part of a new residence. They cannot be detached. ADUs, on the other hand, may be detached or attached, can be conversions or new space, and can be up to 1,000 square feet in size, depending on the number of bedrooms. At the study session back in May, there was consensus from the council on several items. So tonight, I will quickly list those and go through them, but I'm happy to go back more in depth if the council would like afterwards. In terms of this group of changes, which we're clarifying, we're calling the clarifying items, they're not proposed changes to existing practice, just things that we've seen that need to be explained more clearly in our code. So for JDUs, this includes language, which clarifies that JDUs can only be built within an existing residence or as part of a new house. And for ADUs, the clarifying language focuses on allowing additions to non-conforming structures if the addition itself is conforming, requiring that the second-floor ADUs meet house setbacks, except for one exception, which we'll discuss in a minute, and then allowing the sale of ADUs separate from the main residence in limited instances. And this is really in response to a state law that recently was passed. This group of changes are policy changes in terms of requirements that are proposed to be changed. However, there did appear to be general consensus on these as well, so I'll just list those briefly. The language focusing on balconies, openings, and stairs would state that these, I'm sorry, balconies and windows above the first floor of JDUs and ADUs would not face the rear or near side property line unless needed for ingress or egress. Our current code has this prohibition on the first floor as well, which has been, we didn't feel was really making a difference other than causing some issues with design. For windows, the new language is proposing to remove the standard minimum sill height and obscure glass requirement, but would allow staff to require this on second-story ADUs if the conditions warrant, but would not require it for every project as the code does now. And then tonight, I wanted to focus on the reverse corner lots. Again, this, a lot of this will seem familiar from the study session, but we do have some additional info to share. So for the reverse corner lots, staff is proposing to allow a five-foot rear setback on the second floor. And I'll again go through what a reverse corner lot is, again, in case anyone's watching, just to explain, explain again how this works. So this diagram will help us assist with the explanation. Towards the bottom of the screen, you'll see the label of corner lot with the blue highlight. The red line to the rear highlights the rear property line for this lot. On the other side of the red line is another corner lot which shares that rear property line. Each of these lots have the same rear setback, and the rear yards are opposite one another. So they're, excuse me, these are standard corner lots. Above this, you'll see a reverse corner lot, again, and this one is in green. The red line, again, represents the rear property line. But in this case, you can see that the rear property line for this lot is actually also the portion of a side property line for the lot behind it, which we call a key lot. And that whole side property line is highlighted in yellow. In this case, the larger rear yard of 15 or 20 feet for that reverse corner lot lines up with a smaller side yard for that key lot. And so what this provision this evening is focusing specifically on these reverse corner lots. You'll recognize these pictures from the study session, just to include what a reverse corner lot might look like. In both of these cases, either the garage or entrance is facing what our code calls the street side, and it's actually the front of their house. So when we're talking about reverse corner lots, we're looking at a rear setback. On the bottom picture, for example, that's coming off of the garage, but in reality, when you're out there, it looks like it's a side setback, just like the house next door to it. In addition to what was mentioned before, there's an additional constraint for reverse corner lots. For the last 25% of the street side, the setback must match the front neighbor's yard. So this is shown, the front neighbor's yard is shown in red, and the required street yard setback in blue. And so what that results in is that green area as being the allowable buildable area for an ADU. Under our current code, the rear setback for RS6 lots is 15 feet, and it's 20 feet for RS3 lots. So the proposal, as in the proposed ordinance now, says five feet, and we'll talk a little bit more about some alternatives to that in a minute. So the proposal as is is for a five-foot rear setback, but again, only for reverse corner lots. There are several reasons why this is being recommended. As I mentioned, reverse corner lots have a rear yard that is adjacent to a neighbor's side yard, and in reality, often appears as a side yard. Garages on reverse corner lots are generally located towards the rear, and we found that building an ADU above a single-story garage has been the prominent desire of homeowners in this situation, not just for aesthetic reasons, but also just cost to build. So at the study session, the council did request additional information on the number of lots that this would actually apply to. So to that end, we were able to analyze the lots within RS3 and RS6 districts and determine that there are 693 reverse corner lots. And this corresponds to about the same number of key lots. We found that it's pretty much a one-for-one correlation. There are a few instances where two reverse corner lots share a key lot. So the number might be off by a few, but it's close enough that we're calling them the same amount for analysis purposes. Reverse corner lots account for about 8.4% of all the lots within the city. However, they account for 74% of all the corner lots. So they are a significant majority of the corner lots within the city. So on this map, you can see the red representing the reverse corner lots and the blue representing the regular corner lots. Staff also took a look at neighboring jurisdictions. The information shown here are the requirements for second-floor attached ADUs. As you can see, most of the cities do have a rear setback of four feet. However, both Belmont and Palo Alto do have their base zoning as the minimum requirement, and that's what our code allows now. So that is similar to our current code. As you'll recall, the side setback for the neighboring lot, or what we called the key lot, would be between five feet and nine feet in an RS6 zoning district, and 10 feet and 14 feet for an RS3 district. In terms of the setback, I mentioned that staff did keep it at five feet as, within the proposed ordinance, as left from the study session. However, we believe even six or seven feet could work to provide a similar level of benefit. However, we do want to point out that as the setback becomes more stringent, we get into bigger problems of complexity, and especially when it's over a single-story garage. As we've seen with people coming into the counter, in our current code, even if they can meet the setback with the ADU, they still have the access issue. So we've had people proposing very large 800-square-foot decks because they set the ADU back and they needed a way to access the ground to the ADU. So there are some unintended consequences. Of course, any relief from the current 15 or 20 feet will definitely be an improvement. But we did want to bring up some other challenges we saw with making it, you know, a lot more strict than what we're proposing. And again, just showing on those earlier pictures where we're talking about these ADUs being constructed. In this case, in both of these cases, it would be above the garage. So in terms of next steps, if the ordinance is adopted this evening, the second reading will be on June 27th, with the ordinance effective 30 days after that. In terms of process updates, I also did want to update where we're at with the expediting of applications. We are meeting on June 23rd with several pre-approved ADU designers, as well as the ADU ally from San Jose. And through setting this meeting up, we found that quite a few cities actually are interested in finding out the same thing we are. So we're going to be meeting with Redwood City, San Mateo, Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, and Milpitas, as well as part of this move to learn more about how we can do this. So that's really great in terms of sharing best practices and bouncing ideas off each other. And then we'll be returning to council with updates in early fall on the pre-approval program and other measures we've come up with. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Great presentation. Questions from council? No questions? Okay, so you did such a good job explaining everything. We have no questions. I guess we'll go ahead and open up to public comment. I don't see any members of the public with us this evening in person. Now is the time to participate by Zoom by raising your hand. Crystal, is anyone in the waiting room?
No, there's no one. No one's there.
Okay, no one's there. Thank you. Okay, discussion.
Madam Mayor, I move to close public discussion.
Oh, thank you.
Second.
Perfect. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay, any further discussion from council on this item? Are we good with the suggestions? I see John Dugan, Councilmember Dugan, do you have a discussion item? Do you have comments?
Just a quick comment, Madam Mayor. Just, yeah, a good set of common sense changes. I'm quite supportive of them, and I think they make a lot of sense. And in particular, I appreciate how you laid out the process and how we'll be looking at a pre-approved ADU units come late summer and fall. So I think that's a terrific exercise. Anything we can do to facilitate ADU development, I will be supportive of. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
I just wanted to thank Andrea and staff for pulling this together. It feels like every time we talk about the housing issue, things get clearer and clearer, and that's translated into an ordinance that is, I think, user-friendly and easy to understand. And I echo Councilmember Dugan's sentiments about the, hopefully, what will become pre-approved plans that will make it super easy for people to get these projects created on their property. So thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments. I too just want to chime in and say that I think ADUs are a really important piece of the puzzle for housing in San Carlos, and I'm seeing more and more under construction in my neighborhood. And I think for multi-generational living too, it's just a really lovely housing solution. So I appreciate your work on this. With that, I'll entertain a motion, as I don't see any other hands raised.
I move to introduce ordinance number...
1584.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18 zoning consisting of modifications to Chapter 18.23.210 accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Ron, I see, do you have a discussion, please?
Yes, I just wanted to say that this is a rare occasion when Andrea anticipated all the public's questions and all of our questions and answered them, so that we had none. So, great job.
Did you have some? That's great. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have one final item on the agenda, which is Agenda Setting, 10A, consideration of agendizing an item to approve a letter from the council to PG&E regarding code enforcement issues and requests in the Industrial Arts District. So this is an item that Adam and I are bringing forward as members of the Industrial Arts Subcommittee. And I do have a couple of photographs just to show the council why this is being brought forward. Crystal's going to help me with that. So... Technology is not cooperating. Okay. So, thank you, Crystal. So this is, there's a little open space at the intersection of Industrial and Washington, not far from Devil's Canyon, that has a few benches for the public. And I pass by there on a regular basis, and trash is becoming an increasing problem. So in this photograph that was taken on May 11th, you can see a little mission project in the bottom left-hand corner that was thrown out. And then, Crystal, if you could go to the next page, please. This is May 25th, two weeks later. You can see the mission is still there. This property is owned by PG&E. This is their substation there. And again, you know, this could be a lovely area, but is continuing to accumulate trash. This is two weeks later on May 25th. Crystal, could you go to the next? That's also May 25th. And then I have one additional. This was just recently, just a couple, it was a couple of weeks after that, so on June 7th. And you can see that the trash is just becoming a real hazard to public health and safety. And there's now a code enforcement case open on this, but I guess I'll open it up to the vice mayor to chime in on this issue as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just add that we appreciate the photos, because the individual really helps. And it's something that we've talked to the PG&E representative a number of times and asked them about it. And it's just, we're having, I think, an increasingly difficult time getting responses from PG&E on this particular area. The Industrial Arts Business Association has reached out to them and not gotten responses. They would like to help be a part of the solution, to help maybe beautify that area a little bit, make it more welcoming to that industrial arts area. And I think between the mayor and I, our sort of, over the last couple of years, as a Subcommittee member, trying to work with PG&E and with the industrial arts area, we're finding it increasingly difficult to get a response from PG&E. So we felt it was time to kind of escalate this a little bit, to try to raise more attention and see if we can get some response, and at a minimum, get this park area, this little open space area, maintained and kept clean.
So our proposal this evening is to, Adam and I would like to work with... would like to work with staff to draft a letter from all of us on the council to PG&E regarding these issues and requests for cooperation, more cooperation in the industrial arts area, because this is just, this is at a tipping point for us right now. So we would welcome brief comments from our colleagues. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate you and Adam bringing this to our attention. You know, really don't like seeing this. They should be held to the standard of any property owner in town, of course, but this is actually a opportunity for them to do something nice here in town, given it is, you know, originally it was dedicated as a public space. I don't know if they were obligated to do that, but they have clearly neglected it and it's, you know, doesn't represent their brand very well either. So I think a letter or whatever else, I'm glad to hear there's a code enforcement case open and whatever we can do to get them moving in the right direction, I support.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I agree. And I was, I also like the idea if they'd be open to beautification as well. And I'm, I'm just looking at that wall and we have two beautiful murals that just went in San Carlos and, you know, just a thought. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins.
Fine by me. Get it done.
Wonderful. Five, five, five in favor. So we will get to work with staff on that. Thank you. Any other items under Agenda Setting?
Madam Mayor, that was Agenda Setting. Are you asking us to bring it back to you with some of these
Yes.
Concepts?
Yes.
For the letter?
With the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items under 10 Agenda Setting?
Can, can I ask, Greg, is that something we could potentially, since there's such agreement, just bring back on consent? If the subcommittee can work on the letter and provide that? So we can, I just think there's, seems to be a lot of support for it, so I don't know that we need to waste a lot of time.
It's just Agenda Setting. If it's on the, if it's on the consent calendar, I think Jeff can work with the subcommittee and determine whether that's appropriate.
We've had letters like that before in consent.
Okay, I appreciate that. Councilmember Palmer Lohan, I see your hand up.
So I'm assuming that item is complete because I was going to bring up another topic. Okay, thank you. So I know, I want to respect Vice Mayor Beck's expressed concern in past meetings with regards to requests for Agenda Setting items, but I, I wanted to just circle back to Councilmember Collins's recognition of our colleague in Millbrae, who was suffered a hate attack this week. And I think, I would feel, I feel compelled that we, as a council, perhaps maybe could reach out to him collectively and maybe with a letter or some such, if that's possible to acknowledge and reiterating our, our standard and value as a welcoming and inclusive community and we're not tolerant of any acts of hate. So I'm just putting that out there and I'm happy to follow the proper procedure offline, but I just thought it, you know, given the recency of the horrible act, I wanted to just bring it forward as a thought.
Vice Mayor?
So I, I, thank you both for bringing, I mean, Laura for bringing this up and Ron earlier. I'd be, I think we should look at what we can do on this issue. I know it's sort of, I'm usually the one who wants to keep the protocol, but I think, given the timeliness of this and it's something that happened over the weekend, I think, kind of looking into it, I think would be worthwhile.
Jeff, is this something that maybe the mayor could send on behalf of the council, a condolences letter or a letter of support?
I was thinking
The message of solidarity?
I was thinking the exact same thing.
Okay. Is that satisfactory to my colleagues? All right, and Jeff, we can work on that then together. Okay, perfect. I appreciate that idea and we should absolutely share our support and our, our willingness to reach out to him. So thank you. Anything else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Take care.